All right. Good evening. Welcome to the August 11th, 2025 regularly scheduled work session. Tonight, there are two items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card, and if you are speaking on behalf of an organization, you must fill out an affidavit that you have the authority of said organization. Please remember this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. Before we begin, I know we have Councilmember Haney joining us via Zoom. Can you hear us, Councilmember Haney?
I can hear you just fine. Can you hear me?
Yep, perfect. Thank you. Will the city clerk please say on the first item?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That first item is the discussion of the draft 2025 Capital Improvement Element, the CIE Annual Update. Ms. Shuba Jangam.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Shuba Jangam, Principal Planner for the city, and I'm here with CIA 2025 CIA Annual Update. And CIA, of course, stands for Capital Improvement Element. So goal of today's presentation is to provide an overview of CIA's annual update and the process that we follow. Georgia's Department of Community Affairs, DCA, requires the municipalities charging impact fee to file and file the annual update, which is kind of a financial report every year. So we work every year with the with the impact fee and CIA experts to prepare this report. And this one public hearing is required when this when this report is presented to you all. And before it's transmitted to DCA, we are required to have one public hearing. And that is going to be next week on August 18th. We'll be presenting you the report and you will be voting on a resolution to transmit this report to DCA. So a little bit of background on CIA. The original CIA was adopted in 2015, and then just last year, we fully amended that CIA. It actually identified 20 years' need for capital facilities such as parks, police projects, fire projects, and roads to serve the future growth. It also has a five-year community work program, which has like additional details such as cost estimates, funding resources other than impact fees, of course, and then years of implementation of those programs. So Georgia Department of Community Affairs requires that the annual update of the community work program tables, as well as the financial report for the last fiscal year, to be included in this annual update. And as I mentioned, one public hearing is required, and the adoption of this report is required by October 31st to maintain our qualified local government status. So back to 2025 CIA Annual Update, what is it going to have? When you before you get it, before next week's meeting, you will have it in your packet, the CIA's annual update. And it will have a financial report for fiscal year of 2024. It will look like this, as you see in the illustration. It will have some numbers such as collections, expenditures, and balance as of September 30th of 2024. There will be financial tables for each public facility category, such as parks, police, fires, and roads, project-level expenditures for those projects, and it will also have a scheduled work program for 2026 to 2030. It will have impact fee eligible projects from last adopted CIA, which was just last year in July. And it will have some minor updates to implementation year. And obviously, next steps are going to be the the public hearing on Monday, August 18th. This has been advertised. You will will be presenting a resolution to transmit the draft, DCA. And DCA generally takes up to 40 days to review it. If they come back with questions, we answer those. And then we're projecting that this we can adopt this by October 20. And then we can maintain our local qualified local government status for another year. So that's just a general overview. We can have, I mean, you will have the report and we can be ready with question answers for next time. Unless you have some today.
Any questions for Shuba? No, here none. Any public comment on this, Tammy?
There are none, sir.
Okay, we will now move on to the next item.
Mayor, that next item is the discussion of the fiscal year 2026 budget. Deputy City Manager Bernadette Harville.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are here this evening to discuss the proposed budget for fiscal year 2026, which will cover revenue, collections, and spending from October 1st, 2025 to September 30th, 2026. Before we go into the presentation, I would like to review the key dates that remain in the fiscal year 2026 budget cycle. Tonight, we will here to go over the proposed budget in detail, answer any questions, and hear feedback from council. This workshop also allows council to see the proposed budget prior to voting on the military rate that will fund the plan later this evening. And we have representatives from our departments with us tonight should any council member have a question or additional information they'd need before going into that special called meeting. On September 3rd, we will hold a public hearing that will allow for additional stakeholder input on the budget. And on September 8th is available should another workshop be necessary. And finally, on September 15th, we will hold the final public hearing and council will vote to set the budget for fiscal year 2026. Here is the consolidated budget summary. This shows you every fund that has a proposed budget or carries a budgeted fund balance in fiscal year 2026. We will go through the general fund, each special revenue fund, and the Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, which contains activity for each capital projects fund in tonight's presentation. Before you was the budget summary for the general fund. This shows actuals for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. For reference, as well as the amended budget for FY 2025. Staff submitted updated amendments last week, which are included in this presentation and may have altered some of the year-over-year variances that were included as a draft in the military presentations we went over last week. New information comes in daily, so staff will continue to monitor activity associated with the fiscal year 2025 budget. And final amendments will be presented to council in September for consideration. In the gray column, you will see the updated fiscal year 2026 proposed budget, which has some changes included based on activity in '25 that will impact the '26 budget, and we will go over that in detail during our overview this evening. Over the past few budget cycles, staff has received topic and project-specific feedback from council, which has been included in this year's budget proposal. We have also held two public input meetings on the fiscal year 2026 budget this summer, in which we shared information and received feedback on new operating initiatives and capital requests, the CIP Pay-as-you-go program, and the five-year operating forecast, including revenue projections and expenditure allocations. Overall, the proposed fiscal year 2026 revenues are 3% or $1,466,431 more than what we have budgeted for fiscal year '25. And overall expenditures have decreased 0.7% or $341,340, which is primarily driven from the operating transfer out to the Capital Projects Fund. At mid-year each fiscal year, we review our fund balance, and any funding in excess of our required reserves are taken into consideration to fund one-time projects, so that figure is subject to change during the amendment process. When looking at year-over-year continuing operations, excluding any new initiatives or required contingency funding, there is a 1.9% increase in fiscal year 2026. When taking new initiatives and contingency into consideration, you will see an increase of 3.5% or $1,299,179. This yields a projected fund balance in the amount of $12,832,945, which is in line with our policy that requires 25% of the subsequent years' reserves or subsequent years' revenues to be maintained as unrestricted fund balance. Here we have the more detailed view of our revenues by source. In the taxes section, you will see the forecast for current year real and personal property taxes, as well as motor vehicle taxes, are based on the advertised military rate of 4.193 mils. Title add valour tax has been adjusted for both fiscal year 2025 and fiscal year 2026 in this presentation, based on recent collection trends carrying into July's distribution. Fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26 have each been increased by $100,000, and then a 3% increase for fiscal year '27 through '30 can be found in the five-year forecast. This change required a change to the required reserves in the amount of $25,000, which has been taken into consideration in this draft. Our forecast is based on historic trend and assumptions, including stabilized values in the used car market and interest rate favorability, leading to improved loan affordability in late '25 into '26. We have seen some volatility in this revenue source recently with an increase of 10% in '23 and then a decrease of 1% in '24, so staff will continue to monitor and make adjustments throughout the through the official amendment process as needed. Local option sales tax, the city's second-largest revenue source, is driven by consumer spending throughout Fulton County. At this time, we are not anticipating significant changes, but potential interest rate changes could impact this consideration. In this budget, we have included a moderate growth of 2.6% from fiscal year 2025, increasing to 3.5% in '27 through '30's forecast. Our third-largest revenue source is insurance premium tax. Collections for this category are a year in arrears, so our forecast is based on collections through October 2024 and includes 5% growth. If this October's collections change materially, we will adjust this request during our amendment process next year. The Deerfield Implementation Plan is now in place, and staff has received interest from developers to discuss opportunities in the district. At this time, we do not have any official applications on file, so moderate changes to land disturbance and building permit revenues have been included in this forecast and will be adjusted once we have more detailed understanding of potential developments coming to fruition. The year-over-year variance for investment income is showing a decrease of $530,000 as the current plan calls for construction of Fire Station 45 and the Active Athletic Complex on Deerfield Parkway to be underway throughout fiscal year 2026, thereby reducing available idle funds in our investment accounts. Those are the explanations of the more significant changes to revenues, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about before we move on to the general fund expenditures.
Bernadette, just from my education, the financial insurance tax, what is that exactly?
Financial institutions tax?
Yeah.
Is on the banks that are within our city limits. Instead of them paying a business license fee, they pay that financial institution tax. I'm trying to get back to right there. I believe we have about five, maybe six. I have to go back and check that number with some banks that have closed or merged.
Oh, you know, I'm Bernadette, I'm sorry. I meant the insurance premium tax.
Okay, every insurance policy that is issued within the county has a tax on that, and we get it distributed by our population.
That's a big revenue driver.
And insurance premiums don't appear to be going down, so we have continued the forecast as such, and just it's kind of hard because it's a year in arrears. So when we get it, we're hoping that it'll continue on this trend. It's our third-largest revenue source. Move on to expenditures. This table shows the year-over-year variances for operating expenditures by category. We will go over the variances by department in just a moment. Just wanted to make a couple of notes about this when you look at it from this lens. Please note that the proposed budget includes a 4.1% market adjustment to salaries based on the employment cost index figure for state and local governments as published for quarter 1, 2025 by the Federal Bureau of Labor. This aligns with our approach as approved by council that in even fiscal years, we will go by the ECI, and in odd fiscal years, we will conduct a more specific compensation or wage study to ensure we are in line with our neighbors from a recruitment and retention standpoint. We also assessed actual history from the last two years of our merit incentive program and reallocated funds based on activity versus a per-person average, so you will see that impacting some of the year-over-year variances as we go through the department salary lines. Adjustments to salaries also impact salary-dependent benefits, including employer matches to 401A and 457B retirement plans, employer-provided life and AD&amp;D insurance and disability benefits, and workers' compensation premiums. There is a 3% forecasted increase to medical insurance premiums included in this proposal. This is the other change in fiscal year 2025 that was recently updated and impacted the 26 figures as we assess the cost across departments and adjusted our allocations as needed. You'll see here on the bottom half, the required contingency of 1%, as well as the adjustments to the pay group program we just discussed earlier. And I'll be happy to answer any questions from the category perspective, and if we don't have any, I'll move on to the explanation of the more significant variances within each department. And please remember, these variances are a representation of changes excluding any new initiative requests, which will allow you to see what changes have occurred to our continuing operations before taking into consideration those new initiatives. Here we have Mayor and Council Department, and there are no significant changes from fiscal year 2025 to 2026. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to stop on any department if you'd like me to. And I'm not going to go over the benefit of the salary and wages and employee benefit changes unless there's something more significant in that department than what we just discussed about the market salary and the medical insurance. In the Clerks Department, we have a change to the maintenance contracts category is a decrease due to the codification of the UDC, which occurred in FY '25 and will not recur in '26, which is a one-time reduction of $26,673. Overall, the department has a decrease projected at 6.4%. In the City Managers Department, you will see some costs that we have associated with projects that we have that occur every other year, including the National Community Survey. And we also have a request for $75,000 to professional fees for the strategic planning process for consultants and meetings that is contributing to this increase seen here. There are no other significant changes within that department. Overall, there is a 12.3% increase year-over-year. In the Elections Department, Fulton County will conduct the November 2025 General Municipal Election at no initial cost to the City of Milton. Should a runoff election be necessary, the city will be responsible for the associated expenses in the amount of approximately $83,795, and we will utilize contingency funds to cover those expenses should that occur. In General Administration, in the Maintenance Contracts, you'll see we have an online. We've moved over to having the managed print services, and we have cost reductions there, and we also have the increase for the toner associated with the general supplies. In the Finance Department, we've had a reorganization, and we've had the reclassification of the Finance Director position to that of a Revenue Analyst. And we've also relocated the Payroll and Benefits Analyst to the HR Department, contributing to the overall decrease to salaries and benefits within that department. There's a decrease to the professional fee line due to the new contract for auditing services. And we've also had a decrease to the general supplies line due to seen one-time costs for purchases of scanners needed for our new ERP in '25 that will not recur in '26. Projections for legal expenses are remaining stable based on current activity and are projected to come down in the subsequent years of the five-year plan to a figure more in line with actuals from fiscal year 2023. In Information Services, you will notice an increase in salaries as we had to due to the timing of the hiring of our in-house GIS position in fiscal year 2025. So we had to move salaries out of that line down to the Managed Services Contract in the amount of $128,300, which will now be reallocated back to the full-time position for an entire year in salaries and wages. Additionally, we will have the full full-time staffed positions. Currently, we have three hired and one is being recruited. You'll see a decrease here in the Professional Services Line. We had one-time cost, the amount of $8,500 for the SharePoint App Developer Consultant. In the Equipment Repair and Maintenance Line, we had to pull some cable at the Fire Department, the one-time in '25 that won't recur in '26. And in the Communications Line, the department is looking at a new configuration, including the cancellation of some POTS lines, which will have an overall savings in FY '26. Additionally, you will see as we go through some of the other departments, we've moved all the communication lines over to the to that Information Services Department. You'll see some decreases within some of the other departments as they will no longer be recognizing those costs. In the Maintenance Contracts Lines, we have some increases to our VoIP maintenance contract and cybersecurity training. The MSP will be reduced if those two positions we were going to talk about later that Ashley presented at the July meeting are approved, so that number could change dependent upon the approval of that. And in the Machinery Equipment Line, we have software expenses in '26 that did not occur in '25, including the Azure Cloud hosting for Microsoft in the amount of $42,000, the Teams conference room licenses around $5,400, and then contractual increases being seen across other softwares, including Office 365 and security and monitoring softwares. An overall increase of 12.5% in this department. In Human Resources, again, in the Salaries and Wages Line, you can see that the position for the Payroll and Benefits Analyst was moved there, so there are three full-time positions now fully staffed for the entire year within that department. In the Administrative Fees Line, you see a decrease as we will now be moving to a new HRIS, Human Resources Information System Platform. That just has a different setup. They are on a maintenance contract basis as opposed to an administrative fee basis. So you'll see an increase down the Maintenance Contracts Line and a decrease up the Administrative Fees Line. Additionally, in the Professional Services or the Professional Fees Line, you'll see a decrease for some one-time costs associated with that implementation in '25 that will not recur in '26, as well as some of the things we do in Human Resources that occur on an every-other-year basis, including the Comp and Class Study and the Employee Engagement Survey, which will both recur next year, and you'll see that in the '27 number. So if you look at the five-year plan, you kind of see Human Resources, as well as the City Managers Department, year-over-year going up and down depending upon those every-other-year projects. A 5.6% increase in this department is being forecasted. In Risk Management, the cost of our cybersecurity insurance, as well as our automobile coverage, is slightly decreased in yielding that decline of around $5,000. In General Government Buildings, we have a new bid out for citywide janitorial services, and we're anticipating a potential increase so that it's built into that Cleaning Services Line. The Facility Repair and Maintenance, the exterior painting at the Birdhouse was scheduled for FY '25 for $15,000 and will not recur in '26. And in the Furniture and Fixtures Line, we have funding requested in '26 for some security modifications and improvements to City Hall. In Communications, we've shifted the funding from advertising to printing, looking at some modernization of communications from the newspaper ads to more things like banners and flyers and approaches such as that. And in the Maintenance Contracts Line, the Everbridge Platform is coming in less expensive than we originally anticipated, so we see a decrease there year-over-year. In Municipal Court, in their salaries line, you'll see the number of sessions and the rate for the Police Department's court security increase, and that also impacts the salary-dependent benefits, such as social security placement in 457 in the employee benefits line. Under their Facility Repair and Maintenance, we had one-time projects, including painting and staining in '25 that won't recur in '26. And then you'll also notice throughout the next few departments that we have reassessed the way we were going to account for lawn care, and that will now be under the Grounds Repair and Maintenance Accounts, combining to create a little more clarity within our general ledger. And so you'll see a credit there offset by an increase here throughout the next couple of departments. Overall, a 5.9% increase in Municipal Court year-over-year. In the Police Department, in fiscal year '25, we utilized $25,600 from the salaries line to cover medical costs that were higher than anticipated through '930. And the reallocation of the full funding we've seen here in '26, leading to that increase that's slightly over the 4%. We also have had the reallocation of the merit pay and medical that we talked about earlier. Under the Professional Fees Line, we had some promotional exams scheduled for '26 that did not occur in '25, an additional fingerprinting scheduled. The Facility Repair and Maintenance Line is the same as the Municipal Court Department. They have those one-time costs in '25 that will not recur in '26. We talked about those communications, the lines being moved over to Information and Services. Down here, under the Maintenance Contracts, we've had additional power DMS licenses in the amount of $22,000, and then we have year two of the In-Car and Body-Worn Camera Agreement, which is $35,000, both more than they were in '25. Under the Small Equipment, again, we've had a we're having our small equipment under our General Supplies Line now, so you'll see some of the items that were previously allocated under machinery and equipment are now being moved to the Small Equipment Line. So where you might see increases here, you'll see offsetting decreases down here in Machinery Equipment. That's again going to be over the next couple of departments as well. And then under Furniture, we're having a one-time configuration, a reconfiguration of some of the cubicles in CID in '25 that will not recur in '26. Moving on to our Fire Department. Their year-over-year increase in salaries and wages is slightly lower than the other departments as they had a quarter of funding set aside for fiscal year '25 for Fire Station 45. Now, due to the delay in construction, we will have a full year of funding starting in FY '27, so there'll be no funding for those positions through the fiscal year '26 calendar. There are other one-time costs throughout the department that were moved to '27 as well for things such as smaller equipment, televisions, refrigerator, the stove, things like that that are needed to outfit the building. So you'll see that in the '27 projection within the general fund as well. Facility Repair and Maintenance has a request for $75,000 in fiscal year '26 for Station 41 repairs, including exterior and interior painting, ceiling of the doors from the bay into the living quarters, and some improvements to the bathroom. Again, those communications lines were moved over to Information Services. Moving down to the Maintenance Contracts, the North Fulton Regional Radio System Authority fees are have increased. And additionally, we've reallocated based on the number of radios. We've that's offset slightly by a decrease in $34,000 to the Fuel Master Line due to the cloud migration that occurred in '25 that will not recur in '26. Again, those machinery and equipment line items. Now moving up to the Small Equipment, you'll see an offsetting decrease down there. And then you'll see a significant decline in the Uniform Request. The department has done some research and has found a vendor that is about half the cost of the current vendor we've had. So they've tested their gear, and it is sufficient, and we're going to move forward with those savings from this new vendor. So we appreciate the department's efforts there. An overall decrease to the Fire Department of 1.8% moving into '26. In the Public Work Salaries Lines, you'll see that our position for Sarah Leaders is now split 50-50 between Public Works and Community Development, which is impacting that line. In the Professional Fees, fiscal year 2025 had the one-time Recycling and Solid Waste Management Program or Plan that was implemented that won't recur in '26. The Cleaning Services increases being driven by dumpster fees, and then that lawn care account is driven by right-of-way mowings and the cost with that contract. And again, utilities, we're seeing an increase in some of the utilities across some of our facilities that are maintained within this department. Typically, street lighting is what you're seeing in this line. Okay, moving on to Parks and Recreation. In fiscal year 2025, we had one quarter funded for the full-time Parks and Recreation Manager, which was supposed to accompany the opening of the new Active Athletic Complex, which will now projected to occur in fiscal year '27. So again, in '26, you will see no funding for that position, and that will be reallocated in '27 if you look at the five-year plan. We also have reassessed the wages offered for summer camp positions to be a little more competitive with some of the other camps and other jobs that are available to those employees as they come home for the summer, so that's also included in that number. Under Cleaning Services, you're going to see that same increase that we talked about before as we're going out for the new contract for janitorial services. Again, lawn care was moved down to Grounds Repair and Maintenance. You can see that change there. Under Facility Repair and Maintenance, we had one-time costs in '25 that won't recur, including the fence repairs and replacement at Cox Road and the bathroom renovations there. That's was $35,000 and $18,000 respectively that will not recur in '26. Under the Rentals, we've seen a decrease in the need for the number of court rentals, so that is down. And again, Communications was moved over into Information And again, Communications was moved over into Information and Services. And Contract Labor is up due to the contract with the Pool Company in the amount of about ten thousand five hundred dollars. And lastly, you'll see again the change from the machinery and equipment to the Small Equipment Line. Credit here offsetting that increase there. Three percent decrease overall in Active Parks and Recreation year-over-year. In the Passive Parks Account, you'll see again moving Lawn Care to Grounds Repair and Maintenance, and there really are no other significant changes within the department. Again, a slight decrease there year-over-year. Community Development, again, picking up the halftime position for Sarah Leaders, issues will be overseeing both departments. And then we have the Communications Lines moving over to Information Services. Everything else there is pretty, remaining pretty steady year-over-year. Here we have our other financing uses. You could see again that one percent contingency required. In Fiscal Year twenty-five, we released that contingency to go into fund balance, to be considered into our required reserves, and then we reallocate it in twenty-six. And then we have that change in the year-over-year projection for our Pago Program that we'll go over later this evening. We have the transfer for the debt service due on the Revenue Bond, as well as a transfer over to the City Events Fund to cover any costs above and beyond what comes in from the Hotel Motel Tax for our one hotel. Does anyone have any questions about this section? We'll move on to the new initiatives. On this slide, we have the new operating initiatives that were presented by the Information Services Director Ashley Smith and Police Chief Jason Griffin at the meeting on July twenty-first. The two Information Services Positions, if approved, will move to full-time positions in-house and return third-party hours for after-hours and project-based services. You can see here the cost for the position offset by a credit that would go to that Maintenance Contract for the Engineer One and then for Systems Engineer Two. And that is an overall savings of approximately ten thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars in year one. And again, that's contingent upon going back out to bid for new costs and then bringing in staff. We kind of been conservatively estimating those costs, so hopefully the savings would be even more than that. The Police Department has requested two full-time police officers that will serve as school liaison officers with the Community Relations Unit. They would join our current SLO along with our current Community Outreach Officer, who would be transitioned into a fourth SLO to serve the schools in Milton City Limits. They would be based out of the elementary schools and would work with Fulton County School Officers and School Security throughout the middle and high schools, as well as the two private schools. So they'll be available in all the schools, but based out of the elementary schools. During school breaks as well as summer, this unit will be working on other community relation projects, including the Department's Cadet Program, Citizens Police Academy and more. Here's the overall cost for the position, the one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars we'll see later in the Capital Request Section and the differences within the Maintenance and Operating Requests. Happy to answer any questions you might have as that wraps up our conversation on the General Fund. And then we'll move on to Special Revenue Funds if you don't have any questions. All right. Okay. Before you, we have our City Events Budget Summary that shows the revenue sources and the expenditures going out for the events held and hosted by our Community Outreach Manager and her, the team from Parks and Recreation. Here we have the Event-by-Event Changes. The most significant changes that you'll see are going to be in these Rental Vehicle and Equipment Lines across Crab Apple, the Easter Egg Hunt, the Fourth of July, and Carbon and Crab Apple, and Christmas in Milton. And I meant Crab Apple Fest, sorry, I just said Crab Apple. Those are due to the Police Department's Analysis and Request for Homeland Security Approved Barricades for each of the events. So that they'll be putting those in and they're a little more costly than what we had done years prior for that type of barricading. There are really no other significant changes within the department outside of those requests, but here you can see an event-by-event comparison. And looking at about fifty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollar year-over-year, and again, the General Fund will compensate for anything above and beyond what the hotel brings in. Our Opioid Settlement Fund is here. This is the money we've collected through to the settlements and they can only, these funds are restricted to be used on equipment and other types of activity to reduce the opioid epidemic. So our Police Department and Fire Departments are working to find ways to be able to utilize these funds. We've been able to get testing equipment and AEDs and things like that. So we're going to continue to allocate those funds towards those types of purchases. In the Confiscated Assets Fund, we have a fund balance carrying over forty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars. The Police Department, once they are able to assess any eligible uses, we will assign that fund balance towards those purchases. In the past, we've been able to do additional training, purchase SWAT equipment and the bounce house for the kids that come to some of our educational events. The E-nine-one-one budget, as funds come in, they go directly back out to the City of Alpharetta for our share of the Dispatchers and the Dispatch Center. So that will continue to be the agreement we have right now. So you can see those funds coming in and going straight out. We do not have any current operating grants, so there's no activity within that fund. The American Rescue Plan Act, all those funds have been encumbered and are being spent on the final stages of stormwater projects. So those will just be expensed out as we incur those expenditures. There again is our Hotel Motel Tax Fund for our one hotels. The funds come in here, they go straight over to the City Events Fund. And happy to answer any questions you might have about any of the Special Revenue Funds. Next, we'll move on to our Capital Projects Funds. Here we have the Seven-Year CIP. On the left, you can see the estimated project costs for non-recurring projects. Ongoing maintenance like paving or purchases, including vehicle replacement, do you know how the estimated project costs as they are recurring in nature? You can see in the next two columns of funds which have been allocated to date, including any amendments that will be before council in September for Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-five. And we have the available balances after taking any current contractual encumbrances into consideration. The next few columns include forecasted funding over the seven-year period from the General Fund Operating Transfer, T's Plus Revenues, Impact Fees, IGA's and Grants. This plan does not contemplate the need for any additional debt funding over the seven-year period. On the far right, you can see those projects that will require additional funding beyond the end of the seven-year period. I have made updates to this summary, so if you're looking at the presentation that was posted online, I've made two updates to the State Route three seventy-two area sidewalks project and the FMCC facility improvements as both products are fully funded, and I just had to fix that summary. At the end of Fiscal Year twenty-thirty-two, the only projects that would require additional funding, if this plan stays in place for the seven-year period, would be the final phases of work at Providence Park and the Indoor Community Center that you can see right here. And on page sixty-one, we have the Expanded Pay-as-you-go Program, which includes funding projections over the seven-year plan for those projects that would be funded by the Operating Transfer in from the General Fund. We went over this in detail at the July twenty-first meeting, so I'll not go through that again tonight. But I'm happy to address any projects or any specific questions you have about the Capital Improvement Plan. And then our final piece of tonight's presentation is the Request for New Capital Initiatives. This was also presented in detail at July, the July twenty-first meeting. Here you can see the Request for Vehicles associated with the two SLO Positions and a Request for Funding in the amount of fifty thousand dollars annually to begin addressing items that come out of the ADA Compliance Review, which is part of the Safe Streets for All Project and one-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars to address demolitions and debris cleanup across various properties. I will go back to this and just say we've talked about all of this tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about any specific fund or project before we go into our military hearing this evening.
Any questions?
Go into our military hearing next.
Any questions for Bernadette? Hey, one question on the loss proceeds and the loss money. You don't have to answer this now, but I'm kind of curious where we're hitting our numbers compared to what Fulton County said we would be at two to three years ago. So I'm just kind of curious.
Bring that back for you in our September presentation, if you want me to public it.
Yeah, be curious where.
But it looks like we've been coming in higher than was originally anticipated. It did slow down this year compared to what we thought this year was going to bring in. You'll see in the amendments, we do have a decrease to our projection for twenty-five, but I still believe that it is still outpacing those original projections that we had, but I will get that for you.
Just always curious what the projections they give us to what actually comes out.
Certainly get that for you.
Are any other questions?
I have two comments. One is I commend the city, Mr. Procol, you and your staff. Now, based on talented individuals, we have some, wouldn't say it's job sharing. We have people who are talented that can wear two hats and Bernadette, you're one of those people, Speaker Stacy. Sarah down there, you're always wearing two hats. I don't know how to say, what, say about your multiple hats. But this is a, it's a really interesting thing. It has a very positive impact on the budget, but it's not budget-driven. It's been talent-driven, which is very unique to this city. So there are aspects of our hiring and bringing people along and giving them opportunity that's creating great tenure. And that's a really nice hallmark that I've noticed over the, feels like a hundred years I've been sitting here, but it's, you know, it's good. But the other comment, and this goes to the Police Chief, and this was not the year to say if we could bring on more traffic officers because of school was a priority this year. But I think, and I hear from other people, that really has made a difference in our community because they're very active at controlling speeders and things like that. And so if next year I'm putting a marker out there, if we can add to that, that posse, that would be fantastic. And that's for another day, but we can delve into that. Just thought I'd get it out there early. Okay? Thank you very much.
Appreciate that feedback.
Any other questions from staff? No? Thank you, Bernadette, as always. Any public comment on this?
We do not have any, sir.
Okay, well, that concludes the work session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Haney on?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We will.
I couldn't hit mute to say it in unison with the rest of you, sorry.
All good. It's good to hear you. Are we ready to go jump into the special call meeting?
Yes, I just want to make sure your voting will reflect that, so if you'll just double-check.
Do we need to do this electronically?
That you are on your special called. Should reflect that, so.
Mine's not moving.
Yeah, mine's not moving either, yet.
Good old-fashioned way.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Okay, are we good to roll?
We are good to go.
Okay. I would like to call the Special Call Meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, August eleventh, twenty-twenty-five to order. The City encourages you to review tonight's agenda carefully. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the City Clerk prior to the agenda item being called. While the Milton rules allow Speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item. Once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted. Will City Clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Be happy to call roll for the August eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Special Called City Council Meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please sign its own cell phones. As the mayor mentioned, if you would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to that agenda item being called. Demonstrations of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts or dialogue with any person speaking. Mayor and Council, as I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Andrea Verhoff.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Jan Jacobus.
Present.
Councilmember Phil Crimmer.
Here.
Joining us via Zoom is Councilmember Doug Haney.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Juliette Johnson is absent. Mayor, you do have a quorum. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, into the republic which stands by my nation and my land, indivisible, universal, and just for all.
Okay, next is approval of the meeting agenda. I have no amendments, no executive session, correct? Okay, I would like a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
I make a motion to approve the meeting agenda as provided.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilman Jacobus and a second from Councilmember Verhoff to approve the meeting agenda as presented. The vote, the voting is open. And if Councilmember Haney, if you'll just say yea or nay.
He's, it's all working.
Oh, he's good online? Oh, great.
We'll switch over.
Oh, perfect. Great, that motion passes unanimously. Okay, next is general public comment. Do we have any general public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay, so we will waive the public comment rolls and I'll ask you to call the next item.
Mayor, that next item is going to be the consideration of an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Milton, Georgia to establish the Adverlor Tax Rate of the City of Milton for Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-six and for other purposes. It was under the first presentation in public hearing at the eight-four Special Called Meeting. Second public hearing was at that night's meeting for eight-four. And of course, tonight is the third public hearing and vote for the special called. It's, it's our Deputy City Manager, Bernadette Harville.
Hey, Mayor and Council, we are here this evening to discuss setting the twenty-twenty-five milit rate, which will fund Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-six activity that we just went over. This is our third of three required public hearings. We've gone over this presentation two times, so I'm going to kind of just go over quickly some of the highlighted items and then get back to the milit rate considerations before you. We went through our definitions so everyone understood exactly what we were talking about, and we showed the math and the requirements for the public hearings that we had. The public hearings were posted in the Milton Herald on July twenty-fourth and July thirty-first. And Greg and his team also helped by ensuring that we had a press release go out, as well as information across our social media accounts and our city website. So we've done everything we can to get that message out there. Here's the ad that was in the paper on both the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first. And then the ad that was in the paper on the thirty-first. Here are those year-over-year digest changes that we received from Fulton County. Again, that's a snapshot in time. This is also before they've received final information on any appeals, so subject to change. But this is the data that we have to go off of in order to forecast our revenue collections and a milit rate associated with them. We've been over the math behind each of those ads so everyone can understand how we come up with those numbers and what they represent. Again, they're representing the revenue increase for collections, not necessarily the individual tax increase, and we'll talk about that a little more later. There's that second ad. Here are the milit rate options that we put together. Again, Council has the authority to approve any milit rate up to our capped legislation at four-point-seven-three-one mils. If you are going to choose to do anything over four-point-one-nine-three mils, which was the advertised rate, we will have to re-advertise and hold three more public hearings. But if you choose anything up to four-point-one-nine-three this evening, the rollback rate as calculated from the numbers provided by Fulton County was three-point-nine-two-three mils. And here you can see the history of our milit rate for the Maintenance and Operating Militate, back to incorporation. And then again, at the bottom, we have that separately calculated green space bond milit rate, which is dependent upon the collections we need to pay off the principal and interest due in the fiscal year. We are projecting the need for three-point-three-one-zero mils. And I'll come back to this slide when we make our final vote later this evening. We went over consideration for our metrics and how we compare to some of our surrounding jurisdictions and how we're doing with revenue collections and spending. And also you can see here at what levy for milit rate, sorry, what milit rate, you can see the levy collected for each jurisdiction. Milton's with its significantly decreased density and commercial footprint, brings in less revenues than other communities with similar or lower milit rates, such as the fact of the, how our digest is compiled. And for reference, you have fiscal, our twenty-twenty-four's milit rates at the bottom there. Again, here's those expenditure considerations, and then again, we talked about debt and the debt issued by each jurisdiction. Here's where we got our forecast for the revenues that were included in our budget conversation this evening. That middle advertised four-point-one-nine-three mils was used. Again, historically, we've collected about ninety-seven percent of the PT thirty-two-point-one digest data that is provided by Fulton County in year one for real property, sixty-five percent for personal property and seventy percent for motor vehicle, and that's how we come up with those numbers. Then you can see the variances between the collections down here. I've removed the other budget slides since we just went over the budget in its entirety, but I can go back to the budget presentation if you need to see anything or discuss anything else about the budget. Here we've put together some information for our community so they can understand some opportunities they have for tax savings in addition to that milit rate consideration. We have homestead exemptions available. We also have the Kuva. So we went over all of the math on how to understand, we looked at your assessment notice and pointed out some things. And then we went through all the math and how to get to your assessed taxable value, how to get to your adjusted base value, how to use those to come up with your floating homestead exemption, and then how to use that data to get your net assessed taxable value, and finally, the taxes you would owe to City of Milton. This is a live example of a property within our jurisdiction, a little case study that we did. And finally, we just showed under the three different milit rates, if you had no floating homestead exemption and only had the basic homestead exemption, what you'd be looking at paying in taxes for each of those three milit rates. And finally, we talked about the value of your tax dollar and how at a three, a four-point-one-nine-three mils on a fair market.
And finally, we talked about the value of our tax dollar and how at a three, a four point one nine three mils on a fair market value home of nine hundred thousand dollars with that fifteen thousand dollar exemption, you'd be paying three dollars and ninety six cents per day. One hundred and twenty dollars and fifty five cents per month or one thousand four hundred and forty six dollars and fifty nine cents per year. In your taxes for the services you receive across public safety, municipal court, public works, parks and recreation, community development, our general administration, our pay go program and our revenue bond debt service. And here you can see that broken down annually by each of the three military rates that we discussed earlier. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this presentation or about the previous presentation as you consider your military options for twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Bernadette. Any questions for Bernadette? No? Thank you Bernadette, as always. I thank you Bernadette. I think we provide exceptional service and I think our tax dollars go further here than anywhere else. So, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, sir.
Okay, so I'll close the public hearing and I will open it for a motion.
And I just ask in your motion, if you please choose a maintenance and operating military and a green space bond military.
Okay, the maintenance and operating is four point one nine three.
Four point one nine three, if we can go back to that slide for one second, please.
What's the green space?
Point three one zero.
Point three one zero. Okay, thank you. Okay, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve a military rate of four point one nine three. And our green space bond rate at point three one zero.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Cookerly and a second from Councilman Jacobus to approve agenda item number two five dash one nine eight. With the military rate of four point one nine three and a green space bond rate of point three one zero. With that, I will open it for a motion.
In the motion, voting.
Oh, sorry, but, sorry.
He's rolling, he's gonna.
All right.
Eric, will you just confirm? I was writing that motion. Just confirm my motion in the second.
It was Councilmember Cookerly and a second from Jacobus.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passes unanimously. Okay, there are no zoning agenda, unfinished business items or new business items. Does council have anything to report on? Okay, hearing none. I will open it for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Can we do that electronically?
Yep, I have a motion from Councilmember Verhoff and a second from Jacobus to adjourn. All in favor?
Very good rate from the city.
There we go.
Very well done.
Janice, thank you.
Terrific.
Thank you Bernadette. Nice job.
Thank you Bernadette.
Good job, guys. Thank you.